Thank you. This is the regular meeting of June, Monday, June 16th, 2025 of District 304. Bonnie, would you call the roll? Here?
Here.
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 Thank you. Welcome. Well, to you all. The next item is the pledge, and Stephanie will lead us, and the flag's in the corner over there.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And no kings. There is an attendance sheet if anybody would care to sign it. The second item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have a regular session of May 27 and the executive session of the same date. Bonnie, have you received any corrections? Are there any at this time? A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Item three, recognition awards, presentations, and public hearings. We have Adrian Ramirez right here to run through this again for us.
Yeah, all right. So as Adrian's getting ready, I just want to thank him and Todd for their work on the draft or preliminary budget. They presented to the finance, or Adrian presented to the finance committee a little bit ago, and he's now here to present it to the full board for your review. Yeah, so good evening. I will be going through the draft budget for '25, '26. So to build the budget, these are the assumptions we use that we rely on that help us create the budget. For EAV property taxes, we're seeing a 3% increase, and that's due to CPI and new construction in the district. Evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, is consistent with past years being at $4,288,000 for this year. New construction, we're expected to have $12 million to $15 million. As far as our investment returns go, we're looking at earning average to good investment returns. Right now, most of our investments are at 4%. As far as our capital support, most of the funding for that comes from internal transfers from the O&M fund and from the education fund, which is all planned, and also some of the interest income that the capital fund earns. As far as expenditures go, salaries are based on the CBA working agreements, and assuming that we're fully staffed. Benefits are based on health benefit increases, pension contributions. Purchase salaries are estimated based on support agreements that we have, and supplies and materials. That's all worked on internally and working with administrators and different departments on building that budget. Capital, that's based on our capital plan and our capital equipment needs. Other expenses are dues, fees, contingencies, external tuition, tuition that we pay for students to attend Mid Valley, Fox Valley Career Center, and non-capital equipment replacement and new equipment that's $3,000 or under. So going over Fund 10, our education fund, we're looking at a net increase of $1,488,000 from what we're projected in '24, '25. The increase has to do with property tax increase of 3% in the education fund. So we're looking at receiving $1.8 million more than what we received last year. In local, we're looking at a decrease of $698,000. That's due to interest income decreasing as well as, as well as, there are some variables with that with PPRT, and and that's a variable that we won't know until August when that number is finalized. As far as state income, that number has to do with evidence-based funding, and as I mentioned before, that is consistent. So that's why there's only a change of $13,000. As far as federal funds go, we're looking at a decrease of $125,000, and that has to do with the SER COVID-related money going away. And that, it is a number we also can fluctuate a little bit just because the budget for federal grants isn't approved until after June. So overall, we do have a net increase from last year. We're looking at an increase of around $1,000, $1,448,000. So on the expenditure side, we're looking at a total of $81.18 million, which is around $1.15 million higher than the prior year's projected expenses. So salaries are budgeted at $57.29 million up from last year, and those are based on contract obligations, and like I said, assuming that we are fully staffed. So that number does fluctuate, given turnover or any additions in staff that may be felt. Benefits, we're looking at an increase. That's just to reflect our increase in rates. Purchase services, we're looking at a decrease. Supplies, we're looking at an increase, which we're looking at, and we'll get back, Paul, I'll get back for you. Capital, for that object, spending remains consistent, kind of supporting what we need as far as student devices, just anything that may be considered capital. And other uses, this includes tuition for our outplayed students, contingencies. That's down from the prior year's, prior year's projection. So, so overall, I think we're seeing revenue growth in the fund mainly due to property taxes. But given the expenses, we are operating at a deficit in the, we're looking at operating at a deficit in the education fund of around $410,000. So that number is subject to change based on the final numbers through the fiscal year, and once we get audited, we'll know where we're at. Moving on to O&M, we're projecting a total revenue of $15.69 million compared to expenditures of $14.492 million. So the local tax, we see a decrease, and that just has to do with reaching the maximum allowable amount under PTO. This is a cap fund, so as CPI continues to decrease, our ability to increase the tax extension is limited. Other local revenue, we're seeing that's a consistent, so that's interest income, rental income, parking fees. State, that's consistent. We actually allocate some of our EBF money, our evidence-based money that we receive from the state to O&M, something we're able to do with that, with that funding that we receive from the state. On the expenditure side, it's remained consistent with what we budgeted in fiscal year '25. We've had, we've had some changes with the O&M director. Jeff Dour was one of the, he felt, he felt, he fell under services as being a service that he provided. So for the most part, O&M remains consistent, but we are seeing a, that we'll have a surplus. And historically, what Geneva has done with the surplus is transfer that, those funds over to capital support, to the capital fund to support any, any capital improvement projects that we have in place. So next is our debt service fund, which is used exclusively to pay off any of the district's outstanding debt. Currently, we are projecting a total revenue of $15.174 million. This is an increase of $404,000. The way this fund works is it's funded to pay off any outstanding bonds that we have any interest. Last year, we had computer leases that were paid off, so that fell off. So right now, this fund is primarily to pay off any outstanding bonds.
Adrian?
Yes.
You mentioned the same thing in the finance committee, I guess, I was a little confused. On the, on the education fund, the non-capital, that's for devices as well. Is that different than the computer leases in the debt service fund?
Yeah, so the leases actually went back, I believe, 10 years ago that we were paying off.
Okay. So these are computers from 10 years ago that we're?
Yeah, that we had leased on, and we're just paying off.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
On to our transportation fund. So here, we're seeing, we're projecting a revenue of $4.5 million, which is a decrease of around $457,000 from the previous year. Local tax is up close to $120,000. That just has to do with our regular tax levy growth. Our local revenue is down. That has to do with interest income. We're projecting rates, as I mentioned before, to decrease. What also goes into local is student rider fees and also bus sales, which right now, we're, we might not sell. We had a couple of sales last year, and this year, we're looking to sell, but at a good price. State revenue is down $383,000. This reflects the reduction in state transportation reimbursement. So every year, we file a claim based on the transportation expenses that we had for the fiscal year. So this year, just to give you guys a background on how that works, this year, we'll submit a claim due August 15th for '24, '25, and then we receive that reimbursement throughout the '25, '26 school year. And that varies. They use a formula. They take into account our expenses and our depreciation on our buses. So as far as expenditures goes for transportation, we're budgeted $5.13 million, which is about $1.13 million less than the current year's budget and down from the projected '24, '25 actuals. So salaries continue to make up a bulk of our transportation expenses. Purchase services and supplies cover fuel, repairs, operations. And for the capital expenditures, this includes $1.4 million budgeted for bus purchases, and that's something that's, that's been planned. And we've actually made a couple of purchases this month and last. So this is, we are planning to, this is a planned deficit of $631,000, which, you know, we build up these fund balances to spend them. In this case, we're investing in new buses. On to our retirement fund. So this is what we use to pay IMRF, Social Security, Medicare. For the most part, this is a what comes in, goes out fund. Here, we do leave a little cushion due to, you know, Social Security costs, IMRF. The rates do change in the year, so we want to make sure we leave a little cushion to cover ourselves. The capital projects fund, so what this shows right here is the interest income in local, so that's the interest earned based on the fund balance. Right now, we're projected $125,000. What this doesn't show is that every year, we have internal money coming in from the education fund or the O&M fund to build up our balance and to expense that fund to pay for capital improvements or capital equipment. Right now, based on our capital improvement plan, we're looking to spend $7,788,000 in the next school year. Our working cash fund, which is a non-operating fund, helps, it can help a district manage cash flow. It's like an internal loan fund. Its only revenue source is interest income. We built up a very nice balance of around $16,000, $17,000 in working cash. Our TORT fund is pretty much our risk management fund. It's, it exists to manage risk and protect against liability. Historically, this fund has not been used to cover really any expenditures. I think Todd mentioned that it's been 10-plus years since it's been used. Our insurance is paid out of Fund 10. Our life safety fund, which is used to, to, the life safety fund is used to, for state-approved projects, to improve facilities, anything that the ROE finds that we need to fix. It could be fire alarm system upgrades, you know, something as simple as door replacements. So whatever they recommend a fix, we have a certain amount of time we can do it. We have to fix that, so that's where we expense out of this fund. So currently, we budgeted $711,000 last year, and we've spent $336,000. That number may change depending on when we get invoice, when we pay that invoice, and when the, when the project is completed. Okay. So those are all the funds. Now, this slide shows, gives us a district-wide view of all funds combined. So tax revenue is up nearly $2.3 million, so that, as I mentioned, reflects CPI and new construction of around 3%. Local revenue is down primarily due to interest income across the funds with the rates decreasing. State remains relatively stable. The difference there is the transportation claim. With federal, that's going down. That has to do with the SER funds and what we have spent so far in, in the other grants. So title, the title grants and the IDEA grants. So overall, we're looking at expenditures being $5.8 million more than revenues. And that is something planned. We build up these balances, these fund balances, so we can spend them. The last couple of years, going back to 2020, have been a very, hopefully, unique set of time that we'll never see again because of COVID. But we were able to build up balances because, while I was not here in 2020, it's 2021, I'm sure you guys had, you guys had, you froze spending, right? And you guys were able to build up funds and also use SER money to cover expenditures that would have normally been spent out of the local funds. And here is just a draft summary that shows the revenue and expenses for each fund for 2024 and 2025 and for next year. So again, just shows that it'll be $5.8 million in expenditures exceeding revenue. So areas of concern that we will monitor as the year goes on, economic and external factors, including inflation, supply chain challenges, you know, we'll have to continue to monitor how CPI is. Currently, it's exceeding 2.5%, which does impact supplies, services, just adds pressure to our operating costs and affects our long-term financial planning. Cost of fuel, we have to continue to monitor as far, and utilities. Reduced investment opportunities and return. This year, we had a lot of investments over 5%, and that's gone down to 4%. So we just kind of continue to shop the market and see what can bring us the best return. Something that's always challenging is staffing, filling positions, or having unexpected changes in staffing with resignations. Enrollment changes always provides challenges due to, that affects the way staffing is, classroom size, capital cost controls. If we see an increase in materials, that affects what, that affects our capital plan. So just things that are out of our control. Bus purchases, we've been shopping around trying to sell some of our buses, and what we found is we're not getting the amount that the bus is worth. So we'll continue to monitor that and get the best price for our buses. Health benefit enrollment changes, you know, we just got done with open enrollment last month. So it helps us navigate our costs because depending on what the employee chooses, depends on how the cost affects us. So whether it's PPO or HMO, that does impact our financial planning. And then our '24, '25 ending fund balances. So the fiscal year ends June 30th, and by then, we'll have a good idea of what our ending fund balances will be. But we also need our audit to be completed just so, in case the auditors have any journal entries. The way our books work is we keep our books cash basis, so that's, we post activity transactions when, in our books, when it, when it happens. So anything that occurs in June is posted to June. Our financials, the audit, is based on accrual base. So any income that was received and earned in '24, '25 that gets posted in July actually gets backdated to June when the auditors do the audit and when they do, when they put together our financials. So just kind of some things to keep in mind. That's why when we submit our financial reports monthly, we always say that they're unaudited because the audit does impact us and can change our financials. But it's usually not a big change.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Penn. Maybe, I guess I got the gist of it, but my question is, could you put that last slide up again so I can represent? Thank you. Please, thank you. So economic and external factors and capital cost controls, those are related. Is that, is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Yes, so.
So my, my question is, to the extent that we are still trying to get a footing with these tariffs and where things are sourced and the possible escalating costs for selected items, has that been factored in? Is that one of those things you can't control? Is that what you're talking about with economic and external factors? I'm just asking category.
Yeah, so we, that is a good question. That is something that we cannot control. It has to do, I think, the tariffs, you know, a couple of months ago, that was a big issue. And we have to take into account it is also dependent on our projects that we have. Whether it's tech, capital equipment, that all is impacted by tariffs, anything that can be put a tariff, can have a tariff put on. So that is something we kind of monitor, and tariffs are new, and it's just something that we have to keep an eye on because it is new.
So when you say keep an eye, I'm just not trying to get into the nuts and bolts, so to speak, but when you say keep an eye on it, is that like you have a contingency plan in case these things become cost overrun?
Yeah, so I'll give you an example is Mike Wilkes, our tech director. You know, one of his concerns was ordering the Chromebooks and ordering computers that come over from, you know, different countries. So that was a concern. The way we were proactive in that, it was trying to get our best pricing and, you know, trying to get our orders in that are normally done over the summer, try to get those, do our purchasing and do our due diligence to make sure that we avoid being hit with, with an up cost in computers or technology.
I would add to that, you know, I, I know it's something that Todd has been mindful of, you know, in all of our departments, but, you know, in a recent leadership meeting, he shared as an example, hey, we're trying to have a contingency. If, if some of these external factors make things go kind of haywire, haywire, we may come back and say, like building-based budgets, we need to cut this out, right? Or we may need to come back and look at the capital projects that this board has already seen and approved for next year and say, well, maybe we've got to, you know, thin that herd a little bit if some of those, it's very uncertain right now.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Director Ramirez, for doing that twice. I hope you regard the first one as practice and the second one for real.
Yeah, thank you.
We're glad to have you and appreciate your work.
Thank you. It was a good experience.
Next item is public comments, unless I'm jumping ahead. Have you received any requests for public comments? Would anybody like to say anything? I'm a little surprised we don't have a crowd of Germans waiting to come in. We'll stop right there. Item five, legislative updates. I saw you go through quite a few. Stephanie, would you like to summarize? I'm sorry, Jack.
I thought you were looking at Stephanie.
I was.
I have a couple of updates. I wanted to go back to a few of the bills that were introduced that we had talked about earlier and let you know where they landed now that the session is over for right now. Senate Bill 191 was the mandatory seat belts in school buses that we discussed. So that one did pass and is awaiting the governor's signature should he decide to sign it. The, I wanted to mention on this one, if you recall, I tell you when these bills are first introduced, a lot of times, there's many changes that are made between when they first get introduced until they finally make it through the whole process. And then this one is a good example because originally, these were going to be required by January of 2027, and now they're not required until July 1st, 2031. So there's a lot of time in there. I did reach out to Mr. Latham and asked, so is this something that we start looking at now to put in our school buses as we purchase them? Is it something that we look at in the future? So those are the kind of things that they will work through, assuming that it gets signed. It's possible it could get vetoed by the governor, but I doubt that he would on this one. So I wanted to bring that up as an example of one that has passed substantially changed, and then how we are preparing to make those changes so far in the future.
Jackie, was that still where it just was buses manufactured going forward, or is it current buses as well?
I believe.
Oh, sorry, I could check.
Changed it. I still think it's, I believe at that date now, it's all the buses that we have, yeah. Which is why we may need to start, but I could be wrong. I'd have to reread it.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's a need to retrofit.
I gotta reread it.
Really?
See, it made some changes. It says.
That'd be very expensive for many, many school districts.
Says, beginning July 1st, 2031, each designated seating position and the newly purchased school bus shall be equipped. Okay, so there it is. Okay. So yeah, we don't have to, but still, a big change in the year on that particular one. So that did pass. We talked about how. We talked about House Bill seventeen eighty-seven, where we would provide training and evacuation drills for our substitute teachers, that one did also make it, so awaiting signature of the governor. House Bill thirty-two seventy-five was requiring CPR and first aid for coaches, that one did not make it through. House Bill twelve thirty-seven, which is related to Native American mascot, did not make it all the way through. And Senate Bill twenty-four twenty-seven related to cellphone regulation, K through twelve, also did not make it all the way through. So I want to mention those. So that does not mean these bills are, are dead, they're, they're still out there. There is a veto session that they just announced the dates for, for both the House and the Senate, which is October fourteenth through sixteenth and October twenty-eighth through thirtieth. The General Assembly can look at bills that are out there, they can wheel and deal, they can do things during the veto session, and then also, these bills are also still active. So when the General Assembly meets again in January, they can take up the bills from where they were, if they're sitting in a committee, they can reactivate them. So those things are not necessarily gone and done, they are still out there and could be moved forward, they could make some substantial changes to them, maybe during debate, they decided they needed to take more time to think through them. So that's kind of an update on some of the bills that we had looked at earlier this year, and that's my report.
Thank you, Jackie. Next, superintendent's report, Dr. Barrett.
Thanks. Bonnie, could you on that remote right in front of you just hit the AV mute button on the bottom? Some button that says AV mute. Ah, perfect, thank you. So a few topics to share with you, and then one, I think they have a little bit more of a lengthy conversation and share some new information for the board and community and maybe get some, have some opportunity for dialogue and get some feedback. First, just, you know, that this first meeting in June, a lot of, as the school year ends, a lot of people feel like, let's take a deep breath, where a lot of other people are like, boy, ramp it up, and, and that's a lot of how I think we're feeling at the moment. You know, we've been doing a lot of planning with our leadership team, this first couple weeks after school gets out is when we still have our entire leadership team before some of them are done for the summer. So we've used some of that time to, to work with that group. Also, you know, getting to work real fast, and you've heard about this all, all year long, but on some of those big capital projects. That happens to be two photos from the high school, where we're updating the HVAC system, set the crane, bringing some of that new equipment over there that's going to help that building be much more efficient. And then that bottom picture is the high school library, which was, you know, pretty aged, pretty, a little bit dated, and I think it's going to be a pretty exciting space at the end of this coming summer. So that'll be a cool place, probably go take a look at and get a tour of at some point when that's all done, that'll be pretty neat. I know Shawnette is working with her team as, as we're looking at curriculum projects and planning for the upcoming school year, you'll hear a little bit more about some of that later tonight. I know Adam is working on hiring and getting our staffing all filled out. We continue to be a great district to work, I think, and so we continue to be a great district, a district where people want to work. But as we've talked about before too, the, the teacher shortage is getting a little more real, and especially in some high-need areas. I know our principals and Adam and our student services team especially are working very hard to fill some of those positions where there is a shortage of individuals, so kudos to them for doing that. Think we're feeling pretty good so far, Dr. Law?
Pretty good.
Okay, not great, not great, but pretty good. It's only June, we'll be fine, it's only June. And of course, we're, you know, it's important for us to be thinking about how we kick off the school year and doing that in a meaningful way for our staff, I'll highlight that here a little bit too at the end, but we're, we're planning for that opening day kickoff as well. You know, another thing I just want to throw out there for you to be aware of, as I'm thinking about it, and I want the board to be thinking about it a little more, it's about our intergovernmental collaboration as a district. You know, there are more and more issues that come up more often that, you know, involve a variety of intergovernmental partners and how we work together with those partners. We can't be on an island and can't be a district that is just here as a school district and we're just a body by ourselves, by ourselves doing things. There are more, more partners that we need to be working with, there are more issues, all of those issues require and should require meaningful and legitimate collaboration. We've talked about some of those issues as a board team, you know, in our recent retreat, we talked about some of those issues, and those partners include, you know, cities and villages, other municipalities, and includes, you know, local and neighboring taxing bodies and taxing bodies we overlap with and also neighboring districts. And a lot of, I'm finding that a good amount of my time is being devoted to the need for some of this intergovernmental collaboration. And so what I'm starting to think about is, so I don't, I don't know for certain yet, but I think something for, for us to consider, you know, we have like a task force model here where we have a board task force that, you know, is present and looks at a few things like the technology task force or the facilities task force. And I'm, I'm wondering about the notion of starting an intergovernmental task force so that there can be board members who could serve on that, and it'd be an opportunity and a venue to be able to communicate directly with board members and get feedback about some of these. I think there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done at the intergovernmental level in the coming years, and so that might be a good structure to do. And then that might be also an opportunity to look at our other task force and committees and see if there's people who want to move around because somebody wants to be on one, would want to be on a new thing or something like that, and we could shift some roles too. So I'm just throwing this out for the first time today, but I do really think we need to have a mechanism other than just a full board meeting for some of these intergovernmental partnership things that are going to be working. So food for thought, if there's any current feedback, you know, any thoughts or ideas about that right now, that'd be great, and then as it percolates and you think about it more, we'll circle back to this. But any thoughts on that right now?
I love it, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and I mean, you know, Kathy's doing some work with the library right now. I was meeting with a different village today, I mean, I met with our partners from the city and the park district and the library last week. I think there's just a lot of things happening, and that's awesome. We should be a vibrant interconnected community, but the board needs to be aware and involved in that. So we'll kind of get to work on something like that and share some more information with you about that in the coming days. Then here, here's a big one for us to have some time to talk about.
Good segue.
Yeah, good, exactly, right? As a perfect example of the need for some of our intergovernmental partnerships and the importance of that, there's a new potential residential development here that could happen within our school district boundaries, and we need to have some time to talk about that. So let me share some information with you here. You likely recall earlier this year, we spent a lot of time talking about a potential development out in the northwest corner of our school district boundaries. At that time, it was called the settlements of, or it was called Charles Farm. It was called Settlements of La Fox, maybe fifteen years ago when somebody tried to do it. And then this past year, it was called Charles Farm. That was a development that was being worked on in earnest by the Pulte Corporation and in kind of partnership with the city of St. Charles, they were working on an annexation agreement, and St. Charles was basically going to, you know, annex a bunch of this land into St. Charles and develop a, a big development, Pulte was going to develop a big development there. That development would have included some twenty-five hundred-ish residents, it would have been built in, I think, ten to fifteen years is what they told us, there were, there would have been properties both within Geneva School District and St. Charles School District, and as you'll also recall, a large portion of it was a Del Webb active adult community that would have generated, you know, property tax for the district but would not have generated students by covenant. So you'll recall that didn't go through. Ultimately, the city of St. Charles gave up on pursuing the annexation, and if you might recall, I think the last words I said when it fell through in my superintendent report were, this won't be the last time this comes up because this property's out there and someone's going to develop it at some point. And so here we are. At this point, there's a very different proposal out there. At this point, there's proposed annexation by the Village of Campden Hills, so instead of St. Charles up here, annexing this up into St. Charles, it's the Village of Campden Hills over here that would be annexing it into their village. And their proposed annexation agreement is with Shodin, local developer that's developed a lot of properties and neighborhoods in, in our community and neighboring communities over the last many years. So this project, and you can see here, and I'm going to get into details about it, it's much lower density overall than the, than the previous Pulte proposal. The previous Pulte proposal would have had homes all over here, homes all over here, and homes all up in here and all of this green space. Again, that would have been about twenty-five hundred-ish homes, this is going to be somewhere around nine hundred. So overall, it's much less dense, but I think there's some important facts to know about that. So here's some key points. Again, a total of about nine hundred units as we understand it, and about approximately eight hundred of those would be single-family residences. So a small section of townhouses, that would be down here somewhere, but the vast majority would be single-family houses. Another important thing to understand is that while the twenty-five hundred homes of the Pulte development is a lot more, in this development, they are only proposing homes be built within Geneva three oh four boundaries. So you can see every one of those parcels on that bubble chart are within Geneva three oh four. This would send no kids to St. Charles. Part of the, a big part of why I think this one is more likely, has a much higher potential of success to go forward, is there's been a lot of work done to maintain this dedicated green space and to have less, less dense lots over here as well. So the properties would be less dense here, but then overall, the project basically above, you know, actual Mill Creek, not Mill Creek neighborhood, but the actual Mill Creek. You know, all of this was going to be largely developed by a Del Webb before, and now that's all green space and would stay a green space.
You know what the Mill Creek is? You said bar, north?
Yeah, north, sorry, like, so if you see, here's Mill Creek running right here, basically.
Oh, the Mill.
The Mill Creek, yeah, yeah, sorry, the Mill Creek, not Mill Creek neighborhood, yeah, the Mill Creek.
I know where it is.
Yeah, here, you can see here, if this is helpful, this is the railroad tracks, right? And this is Kesslinger Road, so right down here is Mill Creek School, and here's Brundage Road. Again, as we understand it, one of the key, one of the key factors or criteria here in this is that there would be no access to any of this off of Brundage Road, or down here, no access to all of this off of Brundage or Kesslinger. So all the access would be from over here off of La Fox Road or the new La Fox Road bunker road extension. So that's where all of the access to that would be, so if, you know, houses are over here, they'd be, the access would be over here, yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, is, if that's La Fox Road, is there a La Fox community there?
You're, Mike, microphone.
Sorry. Isn't there a La Fox community there, or is La Fox community inside of Campden Hills right now, or is that what they're?
It's northwest.
Yeah, so technically, La Fox is over here, and I'll, I'll be honest, I, I'm not sure if, is La Fox like an unincorporated area? Like, all of this right now, I think, is technically considered unincorporated La Fox, and all of this would then be considered Campden Hills once it was annexed. My, my guess, I, I don't know the answer to this for sure, but these homes up here that are more spread out, I think these are currently La Fox address, and I think they would remain a La Fox address. It's this that would be, would be considered Campden Hills. So, you know, one thing, let me get back to my key points here, a couple more things to note, you know, our, our partners, community partners at Shodin would, would share, they're a different kind of developer, obviously, than Pulte, smaller and, you know, while that Pulte development could have developed many, many houses in a year, you know, their plan would be to develop somewhere between thirty and forty houses max per year. So the amount of new homes that would come on through this in our boundaries would be much slower than we would have expected from the Pulte development. And because of that, they would anticipate for those nine hundred-ish total homes, somewhere between a fifteen and twenty-year timeline, with potential, if this was all approved, first anticipated units maybe as soon as twenty twenty-seven. So, and again, that access to the west piece that I talked about, all the access would be over there, and that would be something for us to think about as a school district, right? Both in terms of, you know, where these kids might go to school, in terms of how you might pick them up, this would, this is about as far as our buses go right now, obviously, right? So theoretically, this all fills out at some point with our big, beautiful residential neighborhood that would send great kids to our school district, there'd be a lot of busing out very far west, kids that we'd have to get certainly to the middle schools and the high school. So, you know, that's a factor to consider. So right now, this is, this is moving pretty quickly, to be, to be candid with you. This went forward to the La Fox, no, I'm sorry, the Campden Hills Village Board, not this past Thursday, but the Thursday before, and that was actually the first day I had heard about it. So we've now had an opportunity to start engaging in conversation with the representatives from Campden Hills and with representatives from the developer as well. But this is going to take, you know, one of the big things that we're talking about is what's the potential impact of this, what would the potential, you know, in most cases in a scenario like this, there's impact fees to think about and, and, you know, land or cash in lieu of land, things to be thinking about, and, and we're starting to engage in that conversation about this now. That will ultimately need our board, you know, you guys will have to decide if you agree with what we think is coming forward. Right now, because we basically just, you know, are just trying to really understand the full implications of this, mostly right now within the district, it's Todd and myself and working with some of our, our great attorneys who are helping us with this process. So we're trying to figure that out, and we're going to bring information to you as that, as that comes. Our understanding is that it is kind of their plan to get the Campden Hills Village Board to formally vote on the annexation agreement as soon as their next meeting, which would be next Thursday, which is very soon. And so that's why we're trying to work very fast and as quickly as we can to be engaged in conversations with them. But, you know, ultimately, you know, we're eager to come to an agreement that's in the best interest of everybody and, you know, helps us ensure that the new students generated by this development. and, you know, helps us ensure that the new students generated by this development have access to the high-quality education that our district has come to be known for. We're going to have to work through some conversations on that. And we're hopeful that we can do that in the, you know, in the coming days. But it's probably also going to take some time to work through some of that. So it is possible that if the annexation agreement does come up at their meeting next week, it's possible that if we haven't learned enough and I haven't been able to share enough with you that I feel comfortable about or that you might, that I might think you might not feel comfortable about, that we would, you know, advocate that they not go forward with that next Thursday? I don't know, we're hopeful that that wouldn't happen. But we're going to have to figure that out. There could also be some steps in there to say, well, they're going forward with this and we're going to, we're including some language in the annexation agreement that notes, we're still working through what some of the impact could be for our district and how that would be addressed. So that's kind of what I know for now. I'm looking for, if you have direction for me or if you have specific questions for me or information you want us to be looking into, let me know.
One quick question.
Sure.
So this accessibility from the west, is that like etching a stone? Are they not planning on doing anything about that accessibility?
Yeah, my understanding is that that's part of, you know, there's a lot of stakeholders who live within this area, who've been working closely, I think, with the village and the developers for a long time. And so I think some of these things were kind of, they're basically foundational to the agreement. And if those things don't happen, then the agreement would fall through. I think that green space is one of those things. I think the density is one of those things. And I think that access is one of those things.
I mean, when we moved here, South Mill Creek Drive hadn't been completed. There was no accessibility to Main Street by the time we moved in, and then they had to build it out. So I assume they're going to maybe have to do something like that with accessibility.
Yeah, I mean, again, my understanding is that it's kind of a, because of all this green space that is, seems like part of the, you know, like foundational to the thing, there would be no access to any of this from over here.
Isn't Brundage Road designated a rustic road?
Correct, correct.
So then, have they provided an estimate of how many students we might receive? I thought when Pulte was developing that they gave us an estimate of what they thought?
Yeah, Pulte had provided us with that information. We had several meetings with them, kind of through that process. At this point, we've not been given that. We're trying to work through some of that in earnest right now. And, you know, looking at what some of the kind of standard models are for understanding, understanding those kinds of things. So again, Todd, I'm leaning heavily on Todd and our great attorney team who are looking at some of that. And I think part of this is going to be us trying to look at what some of those, what the potential student generation would be. Again, acknowledging that, I should say this, this is important. We've been very public about our enrollment is declining and, you know, coming down a little more over the next few years and then stabilizing for a while. And, you know, we do believe certainly that we could educate these students in our district and do it well. So this isn't a question of, you know, I think this, it could be scary in some scenarios if you were like, oh, my gosh, we're getting 3,000 homes or 5,000 homes, and we've got to build two new schools. You know, I think as we talked about previously, that's a lot of what happened. That's why all of our development is out west, right? With Western and, or I'm sorry, with Heartland and Mill Creek and Fabian. We would not be in that same position. That being said, the amount of kids who this is going to generate, you know, hundreds of kids are going to have an impact on our school and the costs that are associated with educating kids and the capital costs that you have to have to have buildings. We've been talking a lot about the capital upgrades that our buildings need, and more kids are going to require those great buildings, so.
Yeah, and I think we talked a lot in the past year about the demographic study, and then we did the facility study, and now we're sitting at Mill Creek maybe having 25%ish space, but we use that space in different ways. So again, like, I think that means, might mean a little bit of going back to the drawing table about how we're using our space, depending on where these, how many students and where they may fit in on the boundary lines.
That is 100% correct. If this, if this does come to fruition, you know, that 2027, you know, is when we would see our first kids, that would kind of be our runway for having some of those conversations and talking about, you know, to your point, where are these kids going to school? Like you said, right now, this is within the boundary of Mill Creek Elementary School. But, you know, you've, we've been talking about the demographic study. We've been talking about, you know, our capacity analysis. This might nudge some of that in a different direction than we were thinking, I think, not that long ago. And that's fine, that's why you've got to be adaptable. And so I think as we learn more, in some ways, this is, you know, good to be learning this this summer because we had planned to have some conversation about that in the fall. And, you know, this is now better to have it now than in the fall when we were about to have those conversations. But absolutely, those will be things we'll have to talk about.
Andy, you said a couple of things that I just want to make sure that I'm clear on. You said something about cash in lieu of something land? Do we own some of this land here?
No, no, no. So typically, in most circumstances like this, when a development goes on the books, there's, you know, either the developer could provide some land to the district, you know, for potential school, or they could provide cash in lieu of land. And that's all part of different community ordinances, right? So Geneva has a version of that ordinance, St. Charles has a version of that ordinance, Campden Hills has a version of that ordinance. And so that's one of those pieces that we're trying to have some conversation about.
That direction I was thinking, okay. And so that's the part that, as a board, that we would need to make decisions about. I'm just trying to figure out what we as a school board, what are?
Yeah, I think ultimately, the thing you as a board would need to determine is basically taking a formal position, like, for lack of a better term, you know, are we going to publicly oppose this or not? Or publicly try to fight some of this or not? So that's really the decision our board would have. You know, you don't have the authority over saying if this happens or not. That's up to the village board of Campden Hills to decide that. But what this board would have the authority to do is take a formal position. And so as these conversations develop, we'll have to decide, and, you know, appreciate your trust on this, we'll have to work with, you know, Todd and our attorneys and that whole team and figure out what information we need to get to you and how soon we may need you to be able to take a formal position or not. It is possible, I'm hopeful not, but it is possible that we would want to come to you and have a special meeting to talk about that if we need the board to take a formal position on something. You know, especially in the summer where our meetings are only once a month. So I don't know, I feel confident, you know, have had some great conversations just today, and I feel confident we're going to be able to get this to a good place. But I just kind of want to have you thinking about all the potential options out there.
Any other questions? Thank you for the excellent heads up, Dr. Barrett, appreciate that.
Last, I just got one more quick thing where I just have to say, we're planning for our opening for this coming year, and our theme is all together now as we're thinking about all the ways that we work and do things together as educators and as a community here in Geneva. So that's a little foreshadowing for everybody. I'm going to be sharing more with the community and our faculty and more with you all in the coming days. But, you know, I just like, this is that meeting where I like to put out my little teaser. Ah, it could be, could be, could be, could be. Except it's Geneva, it's the blue submarine, right?
Well, I love rock and roll music, so we can do that. Thank you again. Item seven, board dialogue topics and pending action consideration. One item is the 25-26 Policy Committee Meeting Calendar. This calendar has been reviewed by the committee and administrators, and approval is recommended. Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Dan, I think.
Paul.
Paul.
Not Dan, Paul.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and there's no further conversation?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The item eight, work-study topics, future action consideration. 25-26 preliminary resource textbook adoption policy. This was a packet of information from Assistant Superintendent Sims regarding textbook instructional materials being proposed for adoption for dual-credit courses. This will be brought back at a future meeting for possible approval. But if we have any discussion at this point?
I think Shinet had some insights to share on this.
Yeah, so the three resources that we're bringing forward today, these were for, one is a new AP course, the AP BC calculus course. They actually have a new textbook for both the AB and the BC course. It's an open-source resource, which is nice, so it's a free online textbook for the students. In addition, we were awaiting, when we came in the springtime, for final, like, approval and accreditation for two additional dual-credit courses at Geneva High School. These are actually just enhancements to existing courses that we've had. Mrs. Sarah Konzdorf in our Fine and Applied Arts Department has been working diligently to kind of create the opportunities for our students who are, you know, wishing to go forward with a career in education to offer and develop the required sequencing of courses so that students can in fact earn those nine college credit hours by participating in those three classes. In addition, this also allowed us to be in compliance with our first college and career pathway endorsement course in this area. And then we have actually been having our students who participate in some of our more advanced foods courses, entrepreneur, restaurant management, pastry and baking, baking, those kinds of courses. They have been doing the sanitation, safety coursework just as part of that, but that now will allow them to earn one credit hour of college credit. So those are those three courses that are coming forward today. So two of those are resources that will be on display. The third, that AP BC calc class, we'll have a link. So anyone who wishes to look at that can log into that QR code and review that resource.
Can I ask a question? Can we talk a little bit about the, about the strategy moving forward for the dual-course credits? Because if I look at this, I see AP Calc, which is a first, a first-year calc course that somebody might take when they go into university. I'm just wondering, are we planning to drive more of the early gen ed courses that a student might take going into university so that they can get credit for those at a reduced cost? And secondly, get those gen ed courses, I hate to say this, but get those gen ed courses out of the way so that they can focus on their core or their, or their, either the core courses or their major courses at a higher level and get them early so they can even be better prepared by the time they graduate? I was just kind of surprised when I saw the two, the early child development and the entrepreneurial restaurant course. Didn't make as much sense to me as it did for having the AP Calc. And should we not have a history or an English or something like that? So the kids going to university could get those and get those out of the way, maybe at a reduced cost for those families that this is very important to.
But isn't child development's very fundamental to education? So many people don't have that background, I can tell you, even professionally. In my profession, they're not even required to take child development. So I took it, but I think that that's a very important piece to get that earlier than sooner. I mean, later.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that, Dr. Huxton. And yeah, thank you for the question, Paul. Yeah, actually, the addition of those two, the restaurant sanitation and the education pathway course, that is now, those would be our 10th and 11th dual-credit courses, course that is offered at Geneva High School. I understand what you're asking about, or kind of what are those, like, high-leverage, high-utility courses? So currently, just to give you an idea, we have three in the area of science. We have an astronomy, we have an earth sciences, natural disasters, we have a horticulture. As part of our strategic plan work this year and working with the department chairs at the high school and the administration of the high school, our history department is ready to move forward with a course next year, which would be like an entry-level history course. So that would be one of those courses, you know, kind of one of those prerequisite gen ed courses that could get out of the way if they chose to do that. In addition, math, you know, we're in those discussion stages there. We do, we are very fortunate in Geneva, we have five of our teachers that have a master's in mathematics. So we have had some conversations about, you know, what would it look like to offer that college-level algebra course? You know, what would that, what would that impact be on, you know, the rest of the mathematical offering? So that would be probably the next course that we'd be bringing online. You know, one of the barriers to offering dual-credit is our teachers need to have a master's in the content area. And many of them, you know, they'll get a master's in, you know, curriculum development, they'll get a master's in administration, and they feel like they might go that path, but they don't necessarily always get one in their content area. And one of the departments where we don't currently have staff that have that is in our English Language Arts Department. So we have had conversations with our Human Resources Department. We've had conversations at, you know, the high school level, again, with those department chairs and with the leadership of, do we look at a way of incentivizing some of our staff to get that certification so that we could offer some of those courses, again, in those other areas, which would impact, have a broader, you know, span of impact on our students going forward? I think the other thing is, is when we met with the department chairs, George and I meet with the department chairs each semester and just, there's like a series of things we discuss and go through. When we met with them this fall, or last fall, I should say, we asked, like, who currently could teach a dual-credit course? Kudos to high school admin, they took that message from last year and like, you know, went to their department chairs and said, what could you offer? And there are a plethora of additional courses that could be offered in various departments, but a lot of those would hit kind of what you were talking about. It would be a niche area, it would be an elective area. So it may not have that same impact of, you know, getting some of those prerequisite gen eds out of the way for a more advanced class. In addition, you know, I think another possible restriction that we need to, you know, always have in the back of my mind, back of our minds is, you know, we could get to a situation where we have a saturation of course offerings, and when we compound that with our declining enrollment, if we were to say like any of these other ones could go forward, you know, we could end up in a situation where, well, we've got seven kids. and want to focus our energies moving forward on the history of the math, the English and those courses. I will say, you know, we currently in our English department, for English four, we offer, you know, an AP English four, we offer other AP courses in the English department as well as, you know, we've come forward with the English four that where students can choose, mythology, graphic novel or contemporary novels. You know, in talking to other high schools, you know, they pretty much will offer an AP English four track or a dual credit English four track and those are their only offerings. So that would again be conversations we'd have to have with our language or English department in addition to ensuring that somebody is certified to actually teach those courses.
Okay, so basically it's coming, we're just not there yet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I think it's also important to note that, that getting those teachers with that licensure, you know, as Shinet said, we're going to have to have a lot of conversations and, you know, work with our GEA partners and figure all that out about how you would incentivize that and what's an appropriate way to do that, because...
I compound that because a priority, when these conversations started 15 years ago, I mean, one of the initial criteria that, you know, everybody agreed was of importance because of the value it would provide is that such courses were taught by our teachers and not college teachers coming into our facilities and teaching those courses, so.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Shinet, that was very helpful and I would look forward to hearing more along this line. I was attending the graduation of one of our neighbor schools and in that graduation, they had four students who had achieved one year of college credit and one very clever girl who had two years and had a certificate.
An associate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, it can be done and I would look forward to working in that direction. The, look forward to hearing more about that at the upcoming meetings. Item nine, information, board meeting presentation schedule. Number two, FOIA requests and board correspondence. Three, suspension report, all available on Board Book. This is for information only, is there any discussion, it's not required. Item 10, the consent agenda. Item one, personnel report, resignations, retirements, leave requests, changes in assignment, full-time equivalent and new hires. Two, monthly financials for May. Three, suicide prevention services of American contract. Four, school provider agreement. Five, fiscal, 26 hazardous bus routes. And, item six, 25-26 treasurer's bond. Any questions or discussion here or need a motion to approve?
Andy, you might, you may want to comment, I'd asked a question about the hazardous bus routes and whether or not they were all due to just traffic issues or were there some other issues that kind of drove, that we're not, that maybe we not, may not be aware of, what, what's the criteria for a hazardous bus route?
Yeah, so, thanks, Paul. So, when it comes to a hazardous bus route, obviously, you know, our standard practice and the law is, you know, under a mile and a half, you know, you don't, the district doesn't provide transportation by default and over a mile and a half, the district does. But sometimes, areas can be, you know, deemed hazardous and the district has to provide transportation. That's something where I think historically, my understanding is like, maybe even an individual can appeal that and have us consider that. So, the, yes, the vast majority of these, there really aren't that many hazardous bus routes, but the vast majority of them are traffic related. A couple of exceptions would be trains, you know, like crossing the train tracks or something like that. Also, there's a, there's one place where there's a small pedestrian bridge over a creek that we've deemed, you know, don't want kids crossing that. And then there are a couple actually that have been there in place for some time due, due to the golf course in Mill Creek and the proximity of the walkway and the sidewalk to the fairway where, you know, someone like me could be hitting and you don't want a kid to be, don't want a kid to be walking home while, while, you know, I'm out there playing. So, we do review those regularly and, you know, have conversations about them, but those, those are examples of the exceptions.
Okay, any further discussion?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Molly?
Aye.
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 Molly and Sari.
Aye.
Stephanie Bellino.
Aye.
Hi. Item 11, board member comments and reports. I think we'll start with Molly this time, since she was so nice to make that motion for us.
I actually have, I apologize, I wasn't sure where to interject. For item two, I need my response changed to abstain. I got my dates wrong, I wasn't at the last meeting, this was the approval of the minutes. Apologies.
Good catch, good catch.
And beyond that, just a big congratulations to all our graduates. It's really exciting on our end, I'll speak for myself, on my end, to attend graduation and get to stand on the stage and see all of our students and celebrate their successes, but also to all of the family, friends, staff, teachers and beyond who have supported them all the years in their schooling. So just congratulations to our grads and all the best with all of our summer projects.
Okay. Dan, we're jumping around here, would you like to be next?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, just echo what Molly just mentioned in regard to graduation, I think as, as a school member, we're always excited to, to go to graduation, it's one of the highlights of, of the year and so, very fun to be a part of that, so. Kudos to all the, all the graduates this year again, so. Other than that, yeah, looking forward to all the summertime projects and, and thanks for all the information that was shared today from Adrian, so thank you for all that.
Thanks, Larry. Again, I'd like to also congratulate all our graduates. As I told Andy, I was quite impressed by the uniqueness of playing the Star Spangled Banner with one of the gentlemen, young men with the electric guitar, that was fantastic. Took me back a long time, but we won't go there. The, the other comment I wanted to make is, we, we had a group of parents come at the beginning of the year to discuss their concerns about during the summer and the heat waves and the various camps and things like that that go on at the, at the school, at the high school. And they asked us, is there anything we could do to try to improve the situation at the high school for those children and groups that are there? And we had our facilities task force meeting today and we're not there yet, but we're very close, they're installing these very large fans at the top of it and not all of them are quite working yet, but we actually see, today was over 85, 86 degrees and we actually see a significant reduction in the temperature of one of the gyms that they're partially working. Over the next few weeks, I'm sure that they'll get all the software working out and they'll get the, the equipment all working and hopefully this summer, as we get into the really hot part of the summer and we have these camps and things at the school, everybody sees an improvement and have much, has much more enjoyable event at the, at their various events that they have at the school this summer.
Excellent. Steph, you want to start?
Sure, so congratulations to all of our students on a wonderful end of the school year and I hope everyone is enjoying their summer, having fun and being safe. And congratulations to all of our graduates as well, it's always one of the highlights of the year to participate in graduation and just see everyone's accomplishments in getting to that point and good luck in the future. Also, I got to meet with George and Shinet a couple of weeks ago to discuss reading curriculum a little bit. They have shared with us that they are working in the committee to pilot some new reading curriculum and kind of find something that works better for our district. So, we're at this point now where there's two programs that we've decided on and the committee is going to start piloting, piloting that and in June, some of that work should start and then, at the beginning of the year, they'll be piloting one of the programs and then they'll try the next program. But I really appreciated the time with George and Shinet just to go through some of the questions I had about the programs and how phonics is built into that and what that looks like for all of our grade levels as we make a big transition in reading curriculum, we know that's foundational for our students' learning, so they will share more with us and bring that to the board sometime in the fall, but just wanted to share that we were having some discussions about that and lots of great information and good things to come. So, thank you. That's all.
Lord?
Want to send my graduation, how do you say, congratulations to the graduates, it's good to see the exuberance of the parents, however muted from the balcony view, my point of view that is, but I'm glad to participate in that, thank you much.
Yeah, just want to say the same thing, that graduation was a lot of fun, I give kudos to all the students and the parents who did show decorum and it, it's wonderful that everyone can hear their name said at graduation because people do just keep the clapping down or not at all until the very end, so, congrats on that. And Paul, I want to thank you for bringing up the, the story about the AC in GHS because it showed that, I am, kudos to the, the facilities team for getting that done in a year because that's light speed for government work. And, that we, the team took it seriously, the facilities task force and Mr. Dara was able to jump in, give ideas and the team and to hear that we're almost there and having students, my own daughter's, swelter in those in summer camps is just wonderful to hear that we're almost there, so. I'm happy that you brought that up so that we can say yes, thank you to those, to everybody who worked on that at such a quick pace because things like that don't usually move.
Maybe we'll have to have our August meeting in the gym.
Yeah, yeah, we can show people.
That may be premature. Thank you, Jackie, and I would, I would second everyone's remarks about graduation. Who cannot enjoy being in a space with two or 3,000 people who are all happy? It's a wonderful thing and it's a wonderful thing to be part of, so I, I'm very pleased and congratulations to all the graduates. In addition, I would say that we all look on that as a highlight of our being on the board to wish those people well and send them on their way. And as far as the gym temperature is concerned, it's still a work in progress, I think things will get even better. So, having said all that, there, item 12 is notices and announcements, there are none that I'm aware of. Item 13, executive session to consider matters pertaining to appointment, employment, compensation or discipline or performance or dismissal of specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in an educational setting, and that's really all we need to discuss here. It has to be an executive session.
There is, hang on, I just...
I know, there's two items here, but...
Yeah, there's also, I just, of course, I just closed the agenda.
The MOU.
Yeah, so the other language would be, yeah, collective negotiating matters.
Okay.
Let's see. Right here.
Yeah, I'm looking for it right now.
All the way at the bottom, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedule for one or more class of employees.
Okay.
For Larry.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Motion to go in executive session.
Thank you again.
Second.
Bonnie?
Aye.
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 Aye. If anybody needs a few minute break, we can do that and we will be then in executive session.
Oh, it's time to...